The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is August 26, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, with liberty, justice, and all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight. We come to you with praise and thanksgiving in our hearts. We come to you tonight knowing, Heavenly Father Jesus, that in this great community that you've given us, you've given us leaders, Heavenly Father. You've placed them in their position in order to take care of the business of this city. Heavenly Father, you've given us an excellent staff, an outstanding police department, and Heavenly Father, the fire department is just excelling in everything. But we know that, Heavenly Father, they need guidance and they need you. And we need you more than anything else, Heavenly Father. Tonight we come to you and we ask that you bless each one. The decisions that have to be made here tonight, Heavenly Father, we just ask that you bless each decision. You bless each person that has a deciding vote in those decisions. And Heavenly Father, we know that you're in this building and with your presence, all things are going to work for the greatness and the good of the Heavenly Father. We just ask you be with us in our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Consul Authority Member Jenny Tucker.
Here.
Consul Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Consul Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Here, this is the second time that happened today. Conflict of interest: Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest in any scheduled agenda items to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to the presentations consistent item 1.1, update on the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors activities by Riverbank Board Representatives.
Yes, I'm Mayor Member of the City Council, Michelle Guzman. I'm asked us to reschedule this to another council meeting, so we're hoping that she'll be here on September the 9th.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Stanislaus County Presentation and Update on the North County Corridor Transportation Expressway.
Yes, Mayor Member of the City Council, we have a group of representatives here from the county of Stanislaus and the engineering team. This is the North County Corridor project led by Matt Machado, the Director of Public Works. I'm going to introduce Matt, who will then introduce the members of his team, and certainly appreciate all of you being here this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Jill, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure being here to provide a status update on our project, North County Corridor. As Jill mentioned, I'm the Director of Public Works for the county. I'm also the manager for the JPA, the Joint Powers Authority, that is conducting the work, the studies for the North County Corridor. And we're lucky to have you as a partner. You represent us well on our JPA board along with four other members. This evening, I have both of our project managers, Colt Essenwein, who is our Deputy Director of Public Works. He's also our project manager for the JPA on the team. And Matt Sataw is our consultant. He represents Drake Haglen. He's the project manager on the flip side of it. So happy to have those gentlemen here. They will give a presentation, and we look forward to a good dialogue with your council this evening. Thank you. Good evening, council members. Mayor O'Brien, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to share some information with you and update you on the North County Corridor project. I think we're pretty excited. There's been a lot of activity this year in 2014, and so this is a perfect opportunity and time for us to be here, I think, and share some of this information. Colt, next slide. The agenda for tonight, essentially, like I said, I want to share this information with you, but I want to go back a little bit as well because I'm not sure that all the council members have all the background on the project. So I am going to take just a brief step back, talk a little bit about the process of how we got to where we are today, and then take some time to update you more on really what's been going on in 2014, and also some of the key milestone points that are coming up that you should all be aware of as we move forward with this project. So, again, basic problem, what are some of the traffic issues that we have in the northern Stanislaus County? We have a state route that goes through the cities of Riverbank and Oakdale, goes right through the downtown. Because this state route goes through your downtowns, you have unusually high mix of heavy trucks as well as commuter traffic that mix in there. The congestion, the mixture of the trucks, the geometrics, all that creates kind of the storm for contributing factor for why you have an accident rate through this region. It's about 35% higher than the state average, and that's really one of the problems of safety that we're trying to solve with this project. The benefits of this project, as I just mentioned, is obviously to enhance traffic safety, it's to improve the regional circulation through the cities of Riverbank, Oakdale, Modesto, through this region, help goods movement, as well as to help accommodate the future growth of this region. So as part of that, as many of you are aware, and as many residents have told me, the project obviously doesn't date back to 2008. It goes back, some residents tell me 30 years, some 20, but I'm going to start at 2008 when the project was picked up against with some momentum. A feasibility study was conducted for this project. And with that, you go through what the Caltrans, there's some Caltrans lingo up there, it goes through what they call the Project Study Report, which is really the first phase of looking at a project, scoping a project. That was done in 2008 as well. That led into the formation of the Joint Power Authority. And as you all know, Riverbank sits on that Joint Power Authority along with the cities of Modesto, Oakdale, and Stanislaus County. Caltrans and StanCOG also sit on that JPA board as well. Oh, sorry, Colt. The JPA board was formed, which then kicked off really what we call the Caltrans, again, more Caltrans lingo, the PAED is the Project Approval and Environmental Documentation Phase. That's where we're at right now. We're doing technical studies, we're gathering information, we're preparing the environmental documentation right now for this project. That also kicked off the route adoption, which went to the California Transportation Commission. That was the official action that they took to adopt a new state Route 108. Now, they didn't select the alignment, they selected a very large swath of area where State Route 108 could potentially go, and that's the area that we're working within now. You can move forward. So I'm not, tonight I'm not going to go into all the details. What I'm trying to show you with this, this is one of the first alignment alternatives map that was put out there back when this started. And this is just very typical. When you develop a transportation project, there's 18 different alternatives on this map, and you always end up with a whole bunch of thick colored lines and alternatives you're looking at. Because you want to be able to vet those and look at all different alternatives for this. Colt, so as a project moves on, though, and as you start doing more studies, you start doing some of the environmental studies, you start looking at traffic, you hold public meetings, you meet with stakeholders and property owners, those alternatives start to shrink down, and you start to learn more about the project and the constraints. This was, sorry, this was back in 2011. There were six alternatives at that point. From 2011 to where we are today, Colt, next slide, some of it was really brought out by the public meeting feedback at various meetings. And as many of you know, there was not strong support for the Hammett Road connection at 99. Most of the folks said, essentially if I were to sum it up, they said, "Make Kieranan work." And so that was one of the overwhelming things we heard at public meetings. Additionally, they said, on the termini end, on the eastern end over in Oakdale, they said, "Please spend some more time looking at that. Talk to the property owners out there. Your alternatives go through some environmental areas that we, you know, oak groves that we would like to save." So there was some additional work that was going to be needed there, as well as there were numerous comments saying, "Please minimize," as you know, agriculture is the lifeblood of this region. And folks said, "Please minimize a footprint of this project to the greatest extent possible in saving farmland." And then finally, there were a lot of questions saying, "Is a freeway needed for this entire project?" Because initially, what was shown to folks was a freeway segment from 99 all the way to Oakdale. Now, again, as we do more studies, as we do traffic, as we learn more about the project, the answer was no, freeway is not needed, actually, Colt. This is the alignments as of June, I believe, of this year. And we went from having freeway, excuse me, interchange, freeway interchanges at every major intersection to just what we needed at this point. By looking at the traffic and projecting out, we designed for, we need interchanges at McHenry, Coffey, Oakdale, and Rozelle. Those are the four points that we're going to need interchanges at for this project. So essentially, it is going to be a freeway segment from McHenry through Rozelle. And at that point, as you head further to the east, at least with this project right now, what we're talking about, we go to what we call an expressway segment, which has at-grade intersections, either signalized intersections, or potentially roundabouts at the termini at the far eastern end in Oakdale. Looking a little closer in at Riverbank, bound by, of course, Oakdale and a little bit east of Claus Road. For Riverbank, Oakdale Road and North County Corridor will be an interchange, as well as Rozelle, and then Claus Road will be an at-grade intersection. So that's kind of where we are, that kind of brought us to where we are today. Over this past year, you may have seen many of our folks out there in orange vests. We've certainly been pretty active out there. We've completed all of our field studies at this point. For as far as the engineering, as far as the environmental technical studies, we're currently, right now, I believe, within the next two or three weeks, we're going to have all those studies in at Caltrans. We've already turned in many of those, and we're going back and forth with comments and review right now. We're anticipating that sometime in October, we're going to have approval of what we call the technical studies. When I say technical studies, meaning the noise study, the air quality study, the biological study, all the different pieces of the environmental document are these technical studies, which we believe we're going to have approval on from Caltrans, probably in October sometime. That's going to lead to us compiling the administrative draft environmental document. And Colt, you can go to the next slide. So if you look at this timeline of where we are right now, we talked about how in 2008, 2010, the route adoption approval was conducted. There were some preliminary studies done. The arrow right now where we are in 2014, we're just finishing up the environmental and engineering studies. This is going to lead into kind of a big milestone at this point, and that is having the administrative draft environmental document, which is a draft, it's internal to Caltrans at this point. It goes through a very lengthy and thorough process at Caltrans of quality checking the document, ensuring that it meets all the standards before they release it to the public. And so when it goes through that process, we anticipate that sometime in the spring of 2015, that we will be releasing this document to the public. Again, another key milestone point, because folks, a lot of folks have that question, if there are parts of this that they don't agree with, or if there's things, questions that they have, they want to know, "When can I have more input on this project?" Well, in addition to telling them that they can talk to us at any time about this project, and we have had plenty of meetings with folks at their homes and their properties at the office, the key milestone point from an environmental standpoint is when that document's released, there'll be a public review period. We'll have a public hearing where folks will have a chance to, again, voice their opinion. During this public review period, they can also send us written correspondence, asking questions about the document at that point. So that's a really key point in the spring of 2015. Another key milestone after that is, once we have the public hearing, we're going to be, at this point, for you folks, decision makers, you're going to have a document in front of you, which is going to talk about the four alternatives being looked at, and it's going to talk about the different constraints with each of those alternatives. And at that point, you're going to have a lot of information in front of you, as well as all the other jurisdictions, and we plan on going to the jurisdictions and asking at that point, "Do you have a preferred alternative based on the information that you have at that point?" And so we're hoping that during the summer of 2015, that we might have consensus among the jurisdictions. We may not, but at least we'll know where each jurisdiction stands with their preference for the alternatives. That information gets put into the document as well to the final document, because Caltrans takes that pretty seriously. They want to know what the local agencies and what the people want. So that's something that's going to be occurring during the summer of 2015. From the time the draft document's released in the spring, there's a lot of things that go on. We have the public hearing, we're going to go jurisdictions, we have to respond to, I'm sure, many, many, many comments on this project. As you go through that process, it takes us all the way towards the end of 2015, even into beginning of 2016, where we anticipate having Caltrans at that point decide on the alignment and issue what they call a record of decision at that point on this document. So that's really, in a nutshell, the key milestone points that takes us to the end of the environmental phase. From that point, assuming that we have an approved environmental document, that we have an alignment that's been selected, and assuming there's the will to move forward with this, we'll be moving forward with design and right-of-way acquisition through the years of 2016, 2017, up all the way through 2019, I would imagine, because some of that, the right-of-way process is going to be quite lengthy on this one. And then with the intent of putting a shovel in the ground, if everything moves well, in 2020. So that is essentially what we've been up to, and hopefully I've covered some of the key milestone points for you tonight. And certainly Colt is going to talk about one of the tools that we've been using and pointing folks to a lot to help them get information about this project.
I'm Colt Essenwein, I'm JPA staff and also with the Stanislaus County Public Works Department. This website is our website. It's stancounty.com-publicworks. It's obviously open to the public, and this is where we keep all of our information on North County Corridor. Many of you may have been at the March 6 meeting, and at that meeting, we also informed people of this website and promised them that we would put everything from the meeting on the website, and then we would eventually respond to those comments as well. And that is here. And if you look on the left-hand side, there's a North County Corridor menu item, and if you highlight that, this pop-up will come up, and you'll have current alternative maps. The most current we have is as of July 17. There will be an update, minor, minor update, just tiny changes to right-of-way lines, et cetera. So when you see that change, you'll know we have new maps up. This is the March 6 public meeting. Everything's there, the display boards and everything. I just wanted to show you this really quick so everybody knows that it's there. Are we working?
I don't think you clicked.
I think you clicked off of it on accident.
It's spinning, it's thinking.
Oh, it is.
So the network is maybe not as, there it goes. Yeah, so let's try this again. If not, I'll tether to my phone. Maybe my phone will be.
And I will say that there is some, sometimes at this time of night, because of the backups that start, sometimes can impact the network. It's a little bit slower.
Apologize, technical difficulties. It wouldn't be a presentation without some kind of difficulty, right? Well, it'd be even more entertaining as if Stan County was down right now. So let's go back here and try again.
Colt, I've got it on my surface if you can connect it. It's up on my.
I'm connected. I got.
My computer.
Well, if we can't get this webpage, it's going to be pretty painful connecting to the GIS, which I'm trying to show you tonight. Let's see here. Okay, well, they're on different servers. Let me just try the GIS, and then we can, at least you know where it is. Let's go here. And, okay, so the Stanislaus County server must be a little slow tonight. Okay, so this is the GIS tool. This is what I really wanted to show you. Yeah, so if you look on the website, the link that I had, the North County Corridor GIS is here. So the shapefile for North County Corridor should be right here.
I was on it just not too long ago, I want to say, within two weeks. And it is there, trust me. I trust you, Colt.
It's a shame if I can't show this to you. So it's a wonderful tool, it's great for everybody to see, because a lot of the comments we get from people are, "Well, how is this project going to impact my property? I live at this address," and we have this tool that anybody can bring up, and especially useful for council members, mayors, and others. But it won't work on a tablet.
Oh, I see, the GIS won't.
The website does, though.
I see. The website does, but the GIS doesn't.
I will also vouch for the website.
Yeah. Okay, this is a shame.
That's all right.
Okay, so the GIS, anyway, yeah, it's a good tool to use, and it's right there on the website. Apologize that it's not working.
That's okay. So we can demonstrate that at the next JPA meeting, if folks want to see that. Colt, again, and then in the meantime, we can certainly open it up for questions at this point for the council, if you have questions with us.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I'm wondering what process you go through when you're updating the alignments? I mean, I don't see you holding a whole bunch of public meetings. Are you meeting with landowners and then whoever's speaking the loudest? You change it? I just was curious on how you come up with and do the changes.
Yeah, that's a very good question. So in a case where we make a change where it affects multiple owners, typically we meet with owners affected with that. We talk internally about the change, we talk with the owners. If we have agreement, we feel pretty comfortable making that change. We run these through, there's a process we have. We have a technical advisory committee, which has members of, again, the cities, the county on it as well. We talk about technical issues like that. If we want to make a change to, for instance, on the section of 120 where we connect it in, and we have different technical issues with that, we'll talk that through in that committee first. The technical advisory committee will hopefully come to consensus on which way to go with that. We then take that to the project development team meeting, which is consisting of a little higher level. This has Caltrans, this has all the major stakeholders on that. Again, Riverbank is represented on that as well. And we'll talk it through at the PDT level. So that's usually the process. If the PDT then agrees on that change, those changes get made. If it's a change that doesn't really affect, if it's just changing an access road on a property owner's property that only affects one owner, we may decide to make that change without going through that process. But if we're talking about changing the alignment of North County Corridor in some way, then we have a process that we run through for that.
If I may, I have it working now. I can go through this process really quick. The GIS did come up. So this is our GIS tool, and we have multiple menus up here. One, Streets. So what this is, it's not unlike any of your Street View map programs that you might have, but this is a web-based GIS. And so the Streets layer is just like the typical layer you would see when you bring up your phone map. There's also imagery. If I wanted to bring up an aerial, I could look at it, and it would also load the aerial, which is popping up right now. So you can see better what structures may be impacted, or how the various land uses are impacted by the project. And then you have other layers as well, and then you have the NCC layer, where you can turn on and off the various options. Now, the alternatives, there's really, through, south of Riverbank, there's only one alternative, and you can see it. The alternatives don't really break off until after a clause. So coming back here to Street View, so it's easier to move around, as you move along, you can jump straight to a city if you want to. You can use various tools, distance and area measurements, and that brings me over, and then, of course, print a map if you want as well. But the other tool is here, again, if you're a council member, mayor, or if you want to know your own thing, you might pop in and say, "Hey, I'm so-and-so, I live at 4961 Davis." 39, is it 39? Thanks. 3961 Davis Road. You'll see that, there it is. And so here's Davis Avenue, and you click on that, and it'll take you right to the property on the project, and you can see where the impacts are. So here's the parcel, 3961, and we did get a call from this landowner, and we have talked to him, and you can see what the various impacts are at that property. Zoom out, and you can look at the aerial, and you say, "Okay, well, what is his concern?" Because he'll say, "Hey, my structure's being taken out." And you're going to call him back, or, you know, so you want to know what the impact is. And you can see right here that the right-of-way line goes through a structure here on his property. And you can also see that Davis Avenue in this area right here may become a cul-de-sac. But those are the impacts in that area. So it's, like I said, it's a really good tool. It makes it super easy for you as policymakers and decision makers and the public to look at their own property and see what really is going on. As the map's updated, this is also updated.
How about doing me a favor and bring up the Riverbank Industrial Complex at Clarabelle?
So that's right here. Zoom out a little bit.
Now, you have all lanes north of Clarabelle, and we've talked about this before, but I just want to say again publicly, that alignment does not service Riverbank at all. In fact, it detracts, it takes away a large amount of industrial property. And as I've mentioned before, that you're favoring a ballpark parking lot and some smaller One of your benefits of the North County Corridor is to accommodate projected growth. There, you're not allowing us to grow where we can maximum on that, but it is minimizing or actually detracting from our growth in that area. The easements are huge. As I know, and I would, as I've stated before, I prefer a centerline Clarabelle Road. That means both county and city loses, not just all in one area, especially a prime industrial that has access to rail, right, and has already established power and facilities. And again, the city, at least in my opinion, is objecting to that.
I had another thing, if I can go ahead and continue my questions. And mine is back with the frontage road that gives us access to crossroads on the Clarabelle. I've seen a couple of different things, but the last one I saw on there, the frontage road didn't come all the way through. And I think I've got some concerns about that, if you're cutting off access from one side of the county coming through. side of the county coming through to our main shopping center. I see some real red flags with that.
There's no... We're not cutting off any access to any of the shopping centers, certainly not. A lot of the frontage roads that you see on here are just solving immediate access issues with North County Corridor, severing access. And so they get you back to a point to where you can either get back on local roads or on North County Corridor. So you're talking about... So this is Oakdale?
Yeah, I want you to zoom out a little bit because I believe the frontage road connects all the way through.
It does. In fact, this frontage road was recently modified to cut even closer to North County Corridor. So here's crossroads, and then here's existing Clarabelle, and then here's the frontage road that connects all the way through to Coffee.
That all the way out to McHenry? What happened to the piece that used... There used to be one that went all the way.
The landowner here contacted us and said he has his own internal circulation. This... If someone were to want to go to McHenry, they would get on North County Corridor and drive straight over to McHenry. That would be the easiest and quickest way to do it.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Questions about funding. So what sources are to be used for this project? And are we anticipating that this will be a transportation sales tax that will need voter approval? So if we don't get voter approval, then what will happen?
Yeah, that's a good question. And so this is a very large project and so funding is absolutely critical. As Matt mentioned earlier, route adoption was in 2010 and that, in essence, secured about 91 million of ITIP funds. So that's a part of it. This project has also been in our impact fee program for a number of years. So there's... As development occurs, we will be collecting impact fees. So that's a part of it. Of course, state funding such as STIP, additional ITIP funds from the state program is a possibility. We do continue to keep our federal legislators up to date and we hope someday to be a part of a federal funding program. And then the biggest piece is exactly what you mentioned, a sales tax measure. And so the measure that went out in 2008, this was a part of that program, and we anticipate it'll be part of a future program. Now, of course, a future program is just that. It hasn't received approval yet and so you're correct. That funding piece does need voter approval currently and Mayor O'Brien, I believe, sits on the Stan Cog Policy Board and there's discussions going to happen in 2015 and hopefully it will be on the ballot in 2016 for that sales tax measure. So that's a funding source that isn't absolutely known yet. It's anticipated. So it's, you know, in large projects like this, there's a lot of things that you anticipate and you have to project because you never have money in hand before you develop the project scope, before you develop the program itself. And so a lot of it is based on future actions that hopefully will occur. And if they don't occur, it pushes the schedule out. And that's really the essence of it. And if the sales tax measure never occurs, then impact fees will just have to be collected for a longer period of time and it'll take a lot longer to secure all the funding needed. So it's... The funding is really... Is controlled by those sources and it affects the schedule. So that would be the, you know, the ill effects of no measure would be the schedule side of it.
Okay, one more question. So currently, we're going through the widening of Kernan and Clarabelle. So what's the difference if... I mean, we've got... You know what I'm trying to say. We have a lot of traffic that's moving or that will be moving through that widening project. And then we need to have another project on top of that to continue moving traffic the same way, same direction?
Yes, that's exactly right. And so it's almost being done in phases and we felt like, you know, the Kernan interchange, the 219 widening, the Clarabelle widening were great successes for our region. They're really... They were needed, but they're more short-term needs than the North County Corridor. So those projects, and I'll give an example, the 219 widening, when Caltrans designed that project, they designed it for a 10-year life. So in 10 years, we're going to have congestion again in those areas. Clarabelle widening is very similar. The North County Corridor, when we studied the traffic beyond 10 years, 20 years, and a bit beyond that even because it's a... This is a future project, we could see that not only do you need those four-lane divided roadways, you need those to be six-lane divided roadways, and you need interchanges at the intersections, especially at McHenry, at Coffee, and at Oakdale. And those intersections are being improved today, but not to the ultimate configuration. And so that's where the North County Corridor comes in to take it the next step. So the projects that we're building today are great investments. They're a step in the right direction, but they're not the ultimate. And it's very difficult to build the ultimate on day one. And so the incremental improvement is nearly the only way to do it in some cases.
I would like to know how the current alignment, the most recent alignment, is meeting the objectives of the project? How is it the original stated objectives, I guess?
Sure. So the need and purpose is really critical to this project. And as Matt mentioned, in some of the initial steps to get the project rolling, we talked about roadway safety. We talked about congestion through the downtown of Riverbank and Oakdale and that's really the need and purpose. We need to solve those safety and congestion issues. The project as its scope today does solve those issues and so that's how it has evolved. But with that need and purpose always in mind, and probably the other really important factor is to try to minimize impacts. And so you're trying to meet need and purpose and find the alternative that has the least amount of impacts. And so we looked at... We were zoomed in at the intersection of, say, Claus and Clarabelle and you could see that, you know, we're trying to wiggle through a very difficult location there. There's homes, there's businesses on the south side of the road. So as long... You know, we... Guiding principle, meet need and purpose. Second guiding principle, try to find the most minimal impacts you can find. Now, no such thing as no impacts and this project has huge impacts to everybody involved. There's no easy way through any area, really. Even in the far east, going through just open land has huge impacts. But a driving force is trying to minimize those impacts. And so you can see homes on the south. There's actually a couple of businesses there as well. And so we've been trying to thread the needle.
I can appreciate that one. You're talking about impacts. How are those prioritized in terms of, you know, like, we're looking at job creation and economics, you know, advantage and things like that, commercial development? And so what are your priorities?
Well, it's been a group effort, I'll say. And so back in 2012, there was a fairly substantial change in scope where we not only cut it back to McHenry, we didn't go to the 99, but we also, as a group together, decided that one alternative through this area between McHenry and Claus would have one alternative. And it was trying to find the least impact, trying to stay as close to existing rights of way that we could use. And it was a group effort. Now, we're here tonight and I understand that most of you probably weren't involved in those days and so, you know, some of the... Maybe some of the dynamics have changed. But the way we got here was through a consensus of all agencies.
I thought it was the environmentals, as you told me personally, including the wetlands that you have shown centerline right there.
Right.
The wetland... Can wetlands be adjusted, moved?
They can... Things can be mitigated to some degree and some of the...
Because that right there is highly contaminated. People are fishing in there. It's counties, but people are fishing in there and OID is pumping from there into their canal system and it's contaminated. The best thing to do on that is to drain it and move it.
Actually, we met with... The Army Corps is obviously where the Army Corps is aware of their contamination that came from their facility down to that pond. And so the Army Corps right now is currently releasing a proposal for folks to come out there and do a cleanup on that. They're anticipating by, I believe, middle or towards the end of next year, before, well before our project even gets into design, that they're going to have that cleaned up at that point. So that's their plan right now.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Go back a little bit on history. I've been a resident of the area since 1950... 1962. And once upon a time, this was going to go out by night's ferry and there were lots of studies done, environmental. This went on for 20-plus years. I wouldn't even begin to think about what it cost, but a lot of money went down the tubes and it went nowhere. I'm concerned about this project with the timing and it's taking that something similar might happen. It seems to be slowly moving south. I do think we need to project, but I do think we need to look at all the factors my other council members have mentioned, so I won't repeat them. Plus, we need to look at efficiency of spending this money so that it doesn't go the way that it has 20, you know, 30 years ago when they started, 30-plus years ago when they started it. A lot of money went down the tubes for nothing and we're still trying to get there. And we need to make sure that that money is spent wisely and the same thing doesn't happen. Who has the final decision on where the route goes?
Caltrans.
That's what I figured. So we can do all of our study, but they still have the final decision and they will make it. Likewise, when you're doing the construction, we really need to have the access to our facilities so that we're not economically hindered with that. And then you mentioned that the road's now being built on Clarabelle, that they're widening for temporary use. Once the North County Corridor is built, that four-lane is still going to be there, right?
Much of it will be. In fact, if you look in... Colt, if you turn on the aerial, you can see especially around the crossroads area, a lot of that four-lane remains in place. And then, of course, we have to tie back into the North County Corridor.
No, no, stuff will remain taken care of, you know, and what...
That's correct.
And again, saying it as a council member and also a citizen, you're duplicating some of your efforts and you're doing it temporary to get to the other, but you still have built that and the money has patched something, but it's still there to maintain it, to take care of down the road, too.
Correct.
And I've heard this from a lot of people that don't quite understand exactly... When you've done all this work with Clarabelle, all the way from Highway 99 up to the point we're at, I hear a lot of citizens say they don't quite understand why you're building a whole brand-new four-lane road right next to it, you know? So that's something you need to consider, too. There's a lot of confusion about that.
Right.
I'm going to conclude this right now. I want to thank you guys for coming up out, taking the time to update us. We have a lot of information. We have also a lot of question and concerns. You know our concerns. We're going to stick to our concerns until we can, you know, feel comfortable with, you know, moving forward as a group effort. Again, I appreciate it and thank you for coming to the lion's den.
Well, thanks for having us here tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, and this is a public meeting, so I do have any comments from the public?
Hello, King, Riverbank resident. Just one question. From the time the shovel is taken, how long till it gets to Riverbank? Starts going to start out in Oakdale if it starts, right?
Well, I can't tell you exactly where it's going to start as far as where the contractor would start on this project. And we haven't gotten to that level of detail on how we're going to stage the construction. But I would say that, you know, our anticipated construction timeframe is about two and a half years at this point, the complete construction. And so we're looking at it... We're looking at an opening date sometime in 2022 is the answer to your question. Basically, on our schedule right now. Thank you.
Good evening. To follow up on Councilmember Barbara Martinez and Cal Campbell's statement, I'm concerned about the budgeting on it. These things all seem to get out of whack and there's a couple of things. One, we've been about six years into it. We'll have another six years or so on the other side of it. Looking at the Oakland Bay Bridge, looking at, what is it, Gregori High School out there in Soya? Similar footprint to Enoch's. One was 60 mil, the other's 140 mil. So are these things, the planning, the review, so on and so forth, are they budgeted? And if so, how are we doing according to that budget? Now, it's one thing to put all this stuff together and just keep paying with the monies we have, but is there any budget process in there? Any watchdog, any somebody that's going to say, "Hey, it took us an extra million to get this far. We project it may be an extra $2,000, $3,000, or $10,000, or $50,000, or whatever it is." I'm just really worried about these projects that... Because I know you've been to hundreds of meetings, you get all these different changes and one thing or another, and all that has to cost money. If there's environmental challenges, what kind of contingency do we have and do we have a budget and who's watching it?
Sir, the JPA is responsible for that budget and it's... Although there's two counties and three cities involved, we are watching the budget. When they are overrun, even by $10,000 for any project, they have hard questions to answer. So we are watching their budget very closely.
Okay, so if you've been watching it, then how are we in the last six years?
We are a little bit under the budget. I would say by about $200,000, if I'm not mistaken. That was the latest figures I have. I don't know what's been spent in the last six months. We haven't had a meeting, but the next time we do, I'm sure we'll be talking budget. We approved the budget for this year in February, was it? When did we approve the budget?
May.
March?
March.
And that's when we had the budget update on where it goes.
Thank you.
All right, again.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me remember, we was from Riverbank for 20 years and wanted to see about the part of the construction where they took so much of the orchards west from Coffee Road on Clarabelle and then east from Coffee Road towards Oakdale Road. Also, part of the orchards were... In the first part was walnuts and the other part is almonds and some corn. Will that be replenished somewhere in the future?
The county doesn't have to replenish it and that's the Clarabelle widening, not the North County Corridor. But when they build the North County Corridor, they'll be consuming more industrial and agricultural lands.
It's a little bit of an example of what is the destruction that you make of orchards and is not replenished and then in any more progress. And there is a bigger pieces that were right off Kernan for the construction of the road to widening. There were so many other orchards taken down and it's a shame that you call it progress when you are taking down the food for California. Thank you.
Okay, again, thank you very much. Matt?
Thank you.
Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I also would like to... Councilmembers, when they have time, to meet with John Anderson or with the city manager and discuss more concerns, but I think that the county knows where we are on this and I... You guys brought some very good questions and I think they know that our concerns are quite real across the board.
Thank you.
Item two, public comments. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For the record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening, again, ladies and gentlemen. Let me remember, we was. For one, I have a question about where it has the block of 2,900 rots between Roselle and Palmer. It's a street light and if any of you or all of you would like to visit by there at night after 8:30, 9 o'clock, it's pitch dark. There's some individuals that I've seen at one time or another taking advantage of the nighttime. And when they ran out of the so-called homeless by the river, there were more overcrowded there within that block. I hope that the police can keep a good track of what's going on within that block because it's completely dark. It's worse than where it was on Palmer between Sierra and Patterson Road that they finally put a light at the alley. Number two is there is no signs yet for the streets of Novi and Oakdale Road. Some people are visiting, told... Some people are visiting, told me that they're coming over for the one-inch festival, but they were passing by there a couple of times, and they say, what is the name of the street? We know we are Oakdale Road, but what is the one that comes right off to your right coming from Modesto? I say, it's Novi. Novi, I didn't see it. That's what he means, it's probably Novi. I didn't see the sign, so there isn't one. And then in the area of Novi, where the empty lots are there for construction, those street signs are burnt. They're worn out. Don't pay attention to this. It's only two months ago that I asked about it. Number three, signs of the ammo plant on one way is no ammo plant anymore. It should be some type of relief for all of you as city council members and the mayor to start naming the ammo plant doesn't exist anymore. There's an industrial, Riverbank Industrial Complex, or whatever it might be, and then put the arrow to the south from one way on Claus Road, coming from the same way, coming from Claus Road or coming off Clarabelle. Let the other people know, we know, because we've been here a few years, we know that it's not ammo plant, but let them know that there is no ammo plant anymore in there, and there is a Riverbank Industrial Complex now. I thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Thank you. Ms. Anderson, would you like to comment?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Martinez for bringing his concerns on the light issue. Our Public Works Superintendent, Michael Riddell, was taking notes in regards to the lighting issue, the signs at Novi, and we do understand that some of the signs in the construction area are burnt, and there are plans to replace those as the homes there along Oakdale Road at the western edge of crossroads. Those will be replaced. As, as the community may have noticed, those homes are going up rather quickly, and there's also plans for a small park there and, and new signs as needed. In regards to the sign on, on Atchison, referring to the Army ammo plant, I agree with Mr. Martinez, that is something we do need to change. We need to work with Caltrans to, to do that, but, but he's right. We should, we should change that to reflect the industrial complex.
We have talked to Caltrans, they own that.
Yes.
And we cannot change it, even if we knock it down on accident.
Yes, well, yes, that, that you're correct. Caltrans does need to do the work, and they do not take kindly if we do their work for them.
Streetlight Palmer and-
Yes, so, Mr. Riddell has worked in the past with PG&E to address the street lighting issues. I, I know that there are a couple of them that we have been able to respond to. There have been a couple that the infrastructure is not, does not support putting it in, and ultimately, we just have to work with PG&E. They have the final say on some of this. So, but we can, we will follow up with Mr. Martinez. I will, I'm committing Mr. Riddell to doing that, to, to make sure that those, the specific response is, is given to the street light at Palmer.
We're aware that there are a lot of other areas also that are darkened in the city that we need lights on. Is there any way that, even though there's no housing in, I mean, lighting and landscaping district, that we could have some type of fund? I mean, the city can't pay for it. Cities doesn't have the money. How, how do we pay for this?
Well, one, it's either a, an actual outlay of the city general fund expense, or there can be assessment districts formed in the certain area to be able to provide, provide for lighting and landscaping. Or you wait for PG&E to determine that there is a need. And that is basically the process that we've been working with, is identifying needs and having them work it into their plan for improvements and additional lighting. They will come back and evaluate the requests that we make, and again, sometimes the answer is yes, sometimes the answer is no.
Item three, consent count and consistent. Item three A, wave readings. Item three B, approval of July eighth, two thousand fourteen special city council meeting minutes. Item three B one, approval of August twelfth, two thousand fourteen regular city council local redevelopment of thirty minutes. Do I have anyone wishing to pull or make amendments to any of the consent items? Do I have anyone from the public wishing to make any changes or, or pull any consent item? So, you know, I may bring it back to the council for action or approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second?
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Council authority member Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Council authority member Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item six one, request to one, establish the Proposition two eighteen protest hearing date for the proposed solid waste rate on Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, and to direct staff to proceed with the ordinance amendment to the section five-zero dot one-zero Charlie of the Riverbank Municipal Code to allow solid waste rates to be established by resolution.
Mayor, Members of City Council, Maricela Garcia, Director of Finance will provide the staff report on this, on this matter and go through it. I, I would like to start out, though, for anybody who is in the audience or listening specifically in regards to the discussion about solid waste services increase, is that we do need to move that public hearing to October twenty-eighth. And so, Maricela will go through the background on that, but I do want to let them know that the plan is to have the hearing on October twenty-eighth, and then the plan is also to have a, a special information-only session. So, we will have an opportunity to provide the public a chance just to come and get additional information on this matter if they would like. So, at this point, though, I think Maricela will provide you all the background on that.
Mayor and council members, tonight, we are looking to propose the establishment of the public hearing date in order to consider the adoption of new rates for our solid waste. Just a little bit of background, Gilton has been providing services to Riverbank residents for over thirty-seven years. Our most recent contract began on July of two thousand three and went through July of two thousand and eleven. So, we currently are working out of contract, but we have begun contract renewal discussions. Those were started in February of two thousand thirteen. In April of that same year, Gilton Solid Waste made a presentation to the city council regarding their services and the proposed increase in rates. In addition, they proposed three different options for your consideration. They showed us option one, which is our current option, our current program, which includes a ninety-gallon trash bin, a ninety-gallon green waste bin, and a CRT voucher program.
CRT?
It's cathode ray tube.
Television tube.
The televisions or old computer monitors. Option two that was presented is, includes the current program of the ninety-gallon trash bin and the ninety-gallon green waste, and then it adds the curbside e-waste program. So, we would able to put our TVs and our old monitors curbside instead of having to take them through the voucher program to the transfer station. And curbside bulky item program for residents, an illegal dump program, and a Christmas tree pickup program. The third option that was presented has all of the elements of option two with the addition of a ninety-gallon mixed recycle bin. So, that would be three different bins that residents would have. At that point in time, the city council directed us to look at option two with regards to the program that we would like to offer to our residents. With option two, our proposed monthly rates would increase for, on the residential side, from seventeen dollars and fifty cents to twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. For the thirty-gallon bin, which is a smaller-sized bin and might be preferred by smaller families or seniors, the rates would go from fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents to eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents. We also currently offer discounts to seniors and disabled for ninety-gallon cans or thirty-gallon cans, and so those rates are also proposed to increase. The rates would go from twelve dollars and sixty-nine cents to fifteen dollars and ninety cents for a ninety-gallon can, and for the thirty-gallon can, they would go from eleven dollars and nine cents to thirteen ninety-nine. We also have what's considered business or non-residential. These are some of our smaller businesses where they don't require a large bin, or they don't require multiple pickups during the week, and so they are offered also ninety-gallon bins and thirty-gallon bins, and so those rates would be similar to the residential rates. Our proposed fees for commercial varies between the size of bin that they have, from two to five cubic yards, and also the number of weeks, excuse me, the number of days that they have pickups for. And so, in March of two thousand fourteen, our legal counsel provided a presentation regarding Proposition two eighteen. Proposition two eighteen, which is also known as the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, it requires voter approval of local tax levies and the implementation of assessments and property-related fee reform. As a property-related fee, any increases in solid waste rates are subject to Proposition two eighteen. Because of that, the Proposition two eighteen process requires a minimum of a forty-five-day protest period that they, that be provided to all property owners within the city of Riverbank prior to the adoption of any new rates. And so, our next steps is that, per legal counsel, we would ask that you consider setting a public hearing date for October twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, and this will allow for sufficient time to fully comply with all of the regulations of Prop two eighteen. We would send notices to all the property owners in Riverbank. These will be sent to all the Sitches addresses, which is where the property is located, as well as for those property owners who are out of town. They would also receive a notice at that out-of-town location. And I did have, for your review, a copy of the Prop two eighteen notice that will be going out to all residents. This notice is in both English and in Spanish, and will be mailed, should the city council decide to move forward. With these notice, notices sent out, that would begin our forty-five-day protest period. We would also like to request the setting of an informational hearing on the draft solid waste rate study that was performed for September ninth, two thousand fourteen. And this will allow our residents to be able to obtain additional information on this study that we performed, which supports the rates that we are proposing. We would hold the public hearing on October twenty-eighth. At that time, you would receive a formal presentation regarding the solid waste rate study that was performed by our independent consultants. We would also continue to accept public comments and any protests at that time from residents. If necessary, we would schedule a second meeting to validate the results of the protest vote and consider our rate adoption. And also, we are currently proposing amending our ordinance after the fact to remove some language which refers to our old rates within our current ordinance. So, I'd like to go a little bit over how some, our property owners could protest. The protest will be, should be submitted in writing. They should include the fact that the protest is being submitted in opposition of the rates that are being proposed. They should provide the location of the parcel either through APN, if that's available to them, and that can be found on their property tax bill, or by calling the city of Riverbank, and we can provide that information. And also, or it can include the address, so there's no need to, to include the APN if the address is known. It should also include the printed name and the signature of the property owner. If multiple protests are received for one address, then we actually only count one vote for that address. So, there could be an instance where a tenant receives the notice because we are sending a notice to the property address, and then the landlord receives a notice at his address out of this, out of the city, and they both submit a protest. Only one vote is counted for that property. It's half, or half and half, which would equal the, the one vote. Protests can be mailed or delivered to the city clerk, and also, they can be made at the public hearing on October twenty-eighth, but all protests must be submitted in writing in order to be considered. We're also recommending tonight a change in our ordinance. Currently, our municipal code requires the adoption of rates by ordinance. This requires two meetings, one to introduce the ordinance, one to adopt, and a second to adopt the ordinance. And then the ordinance actually doesn't take effect until thirty days after that. By being able to adopt our rates by resolution, we would allow for a more streamlined process. It would only require one meeting, and the rates would be effective immediately. We would still go through the public hearing notification to all of the, the residents with notices going out in the newspaper. And so, our recommendation for tonight is to consider setting the public hearing date for October twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, and also, your consideration to authorize the amendment of Section fifty point one zero C, which would allow rates to be amended by resolution. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
I got just one. Why couldn't we do it, say, earlier than October twenty-eighth? Is there a reason, per se?
Yes, so, should you want to move forward with this process, it actually takes about a one-week period in order to have all of the notices processed and mailed out to our residents. What we would like to do is for the residents to have these notices in their hands before the forty-five-day protest period begins. That way, they're fully informed of what the city's intentions are, and they do have the forty-five days to be able to come in and protest.
Yes, you have plenty of time to get the-
Correct.
-information to the residents.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public meeting?
This is a clarification question. So, if you vote for number two down there to allow the rates to be amended by resolution, you still have to go through the Prop two eighteen thing. Okay, so, once that's all done and you get, it gets on your desk, then now you're considering the change in the second part of it. Great, thank you.
Larry King, Riverbank resident. How many people would have to disagree before it wouldn't go forward?
Fifty percent plus one.
Fifty percent of all the property owners? Thank you.
The senior rate, it's the same service as the unsenior rate. How do you, what age is a senior, and how do you do this? In other words, if I'm a senior, let's say I'm eighty and I'm a senior, and I'm now on the regular plan, how do I get to the senior plan? And at what age?
Disable yourself.
Maricela, you want to answer that?
Currently, the way the program works is that they have to be seniors over the age of sixty-five, and then there's also an income limit, which is set at fourteen hundred dollars. Currently, the application is available online, as well as in our finance department for any of those residents that may be interested in applying.
Fourteen hundred a month?
Correct.
I had a, I had a case with a friend who is ninety-two years old, and I requested in March with his permission, because his kind of communication, he don't seem to accept when they come out with profanity and things like that. So, anyway, they didn't have the thirty-gallon can at the time from Gilton Company, and he was thinking that because they don't have the can, then they're going to start, still continue on charging the thirteen ninety-nine that they charged for the ninety-gallon can. And it wasn't so, so it's a, no, excuse me, the seventeen, seventeen dollars fifty cents is for ninety-gallon can right now, being that he's senior, well, ninety-two years old, and also, his main reason was because he doesn't have that much garbage. He lives alone, and any other visitors or guests, they don't throw that much garbage in his can, so that can is like about every two weeks, it's like half ways or less. He puts it outside sometimes, there is weeks that he doesn't put it because there isn't that much garbage in it. So, that was another necessity that he had, was changing to, to the thirty-gallon. And they tell me today at Gilton, because I saw this announcement for the city council meeting, that they do have the cans now, they've been trying to, I doubt it, because he would have it in his answering machine, that they tried to communicate with him, but it's not true, because then the city has his phone number also and his name about that need, and then I- And then I find out in his bill, he's been getting, every two months, he's been getting the rate of 218, which is $11.09 at the 13-gallon, because it wasn't his fault that they didn't have the can available. Now it is required for him to leave the can on the Monday that it's pickup time and leave the can all day. So when the other truck comes up during the day with a 13-gallon can, then the 90-gallon can can be picked up. And so that was another thing that I wanted to add to that information, is very valuable information. If you are a senior and you don't have that much garbage, why be paying for 90 gallons that you don't need? And go for the 13-gallon if you are 65, 65 years old. I thought I qualified. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Soon, I'm bringing it back to the city council, and I'd like to take two, make two votes, two separate votes. One, establish Proposition 218 protest hearing date for the proposed solid waste rate on Tuesday, October 28, 2014.
I so move.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve and second item one of item 6.1.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cheryl Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Cheryl O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item two, direct the staff to proceed with the ordinance amendment to Section 50.10 Charlie of the Riverbank Municipal Code to allow solid waste rate to be established by resolution.
I so move.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item two of item 6.2, 6.1, and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item seven, staff comments.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I will start off with, we will not only be needing one of the closed sessions that is listed on the agenda tonight, and the item that we do need to have this evening is item 8.2, which is relating to the local redevelopment authority, and that's with Conference with Real Property Negotiators. Items 8.1 and 8.3 are not needed. In regards to some issues that are coming up, and I wanted to make you as well as members of the community available, information available to them is that we are experiencing a number of mosquito outbreaks and infestations throughout the city. We've had a number of incidents at our parks, and I wanted to let everybody know that the East Side Mosquito Abatement District is prepared to address those questions. The contact person for us is Lloyd Douglas, and the phone number is area code 209-522-4098. And that's 522-4098, and that's the East Side Mosquito Abatement District, and we'll be happy to help. They are the experts in this. They can monitor for infestations and treat for them. They can also provide precautions in regards to West Nile virus, of course, we're all very concerned about at this point. I do want the residents to know that. In addition to that, I wanted to let the council know that clearly, our hearts go out to those impacted by the earthquake and those impacted by the fire in our own community two weeks ago. And as it turns out, we have an emergency preparedness workshop scheduled for the staff tomorrow morning, and that's been on the books for more than a month, but I think the recent events make that a very timely discussion with representatives from County of Stanislaus Office of Emergency Services. So I do want to let the council know that's one of those things that's a part of our strategic plan and something that weighs heavily on all of us in terms of our responsibility as emergency responders. And then at this point, too, I'd like to hand it over to Mayor Sella Garcia to talk a little bit about the Budget Advisory Committee.
Good evening. Just hoping to call out to all of our residents who might be interested in applying for our Budget Advisory Committee. We currently have four vacancies. One application has been received, so I will be submitting that to the selection committee for their review. The fortunate thing is, is that it is a former member who was eligible to reapply, and so we were glad to see that application come in, and hopefully, the selection committee will move forward with proposing the appointment of this member. But that would make, should that appointment occur, that would still leave three seats vacant, and so any information can be requested from the finance department, or the application is also available online.
Do they have to be a resident of Riverbank, or can they be a resident of Stockton on the planning commission?
They should be a resident of Riverbank and hopefully have some interest in budgeting.
Thank you.
And then Sue Fitzpatrick to talk a little bit about the new activity guide.
Mayor, members of the council, we have our new activity guides. We have a new look that we're very happy with. We decided to decrease our quantity and increase our quality and change up our distribution a little bit. So these are available at all the city halls. They're available at the schools and at the library and online as well. So I'll leave some on the table if anyone is interested.
Finish a very successful summer. And then finally, we'd like to acknowledge Mark Kendall Berger from Snyder Electric, who participated with the city council and city staff last Friday at the groundbreaking for the wastewater treatment plant, groundbreaking. So, Mark, thank you for your support of that and the work that you'll be doing. That concludes our comments tonight.
Before I give it to the council, I'd just also like to recognize Dr. Kemp from the superintendent of schools. I meant to do that at the beginning, and the glare blinded me. All right, councilmember Jones Cruz.
I just had a couple of things, kind of following up with city manager's comments and Ms. Sullivan's comments. If you haven't gotten a chance to be on the Budget Advisory Committee, it's a pretty good committee to be on as far as residents goes through all the budgeting process, and you really learn a lot about what's going on and how the money's spent in our city. And one of the things directly related to tonight's, in tonight's meeting, was the recommendation of the sewer rates. Pretty important stuff going on, and you guys out there have a direct hand in making those recommendations to us. I would strongly encourage you, if you have any interest in that, to come out. It's a good committee to sit on. I just wanted to thank the Stanislaus Consolidated Firefighters for their vow in a tent over here with the fire. A lot of destruction went on, but I think it could have been a lot worse, and I was really pleased to see that they were able to contain it to the one instead of having it. It could have been disastrous. And I just wanted to say a big thank you out to them and their efforts in that. The mosquitoes, I'm glad you brought that up. It's been a rough, rough couple of weeks. We were at a dinner outside and ended up having to leave because of the mosquito. It was so bad. So I was pleased to hear that we had some mosquito abatement stuff coming in, so I really appreciate that. And those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
I do have a couple announcements. Invitation reminder about our farmer's market Wednesday night out, every Wednesday from 5 to 8 at our community center. And the activity guide is very professional-looking, so nice job. I really like the look and feel of it. And the Chamber of Commerce is going to recognize our, have a memorial for Scott Pettit, and it's going to be the Blues and Bibbs. And it's going to be a ribs and chili cook-off. It's going to be September 13 from 4 to 8, also at the community center. And I just want to go on record to say that I really have a big, huge concern about the North County Corridor. I think I've said before that this project is going to affect everyone's lives in Riverbank, and it's just so important that we make sure that they understand where we're coming from, that we have to have access for the economic development, not only at crossroads, but at the Riverbank industrial complex. It's really a huge project, so I hope they hear us strong and clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Tucker.
Well, I won't repeat what everyone else has said. You all took my thunder, so I just want to echo, strongly echo, the comments that have been made by both of my fellow councilmembers so far. And please help us be vigilant in watching the county and the project team that was here this evening and their progress through this North County Corridor project. As Councilmember Barbara Martinez said, it is certainly going to impact all of our lives, and we want to make sure that the interests of Riverbank are put at the forefront on their priority list, so thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I want to applaud our staff and our city manager for having a disaster plan for preparedness, and also, our staff's professionalism in the things that they do. I was fortunate enough to be coming downtown, and when I got to the stoplight, the fire had just basically began, and I looked over there. At first, I thought the Del Rio Theater was on fire, but it wasn't to be. But the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Department did a tremendously good job of being there in just minutes and getting it under control and minimizing the damage, and I share your satisfaction with their job. Likewise, I'd like to remind everyone that Riverbank Christian Food Sharing will be having their spaghetti dinner on the 20th down at the community center. I encourage you to go to it. It's their major fundraiser, and it goes back into their projects to help the needy have plenty of food in our community.
Thank you. I'd like to extend the condolences to the Treywick family for the loss of Mrs. Treywick. She was a magnificent individual, did a lot for the community, and she will be missed. I want to thank the county for coming on out here and listening to all of us. Our concerns are quite valid, and they understand that we have a unified front, which is very important, especially as events happen that needs or acquires the funding for this project. With that, I'd like to go on to closed session. I want to read all three and have people comment on all three since they were all on the agenda. Closed session, consistent item 8.1, which will not be heard, but conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495, I don't have my glasses, 6.9 Alpha. Name of case, Adria Allen and Frances Allen versus City of Riverbank, Stanislaus County Superior, case number 670739. LRA item 8.2, conference with real property negotiators, government code section 54956.8. Property, APN number 062031007, 062031006, and 062008009. Agency negotiator Jill Anderson, city manager, property negotiator U.S. Army, under negotiation, price, term of payment, or both. LRA item 8.3, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant of subdivision, Bravo, of government code 54956.9, one potential case. Is there any public comment on any of these items? We will only consider LRA item 8.2. With that, meeting is adjourned. Or in recess. Recess. That's what I truly meant to say. That's what I truly meant to say.[1378.88][1378.88](Laughter).[1379.88]